Owners and a number of of developers.
All right, Jim, Bobcats and rodenticide.
All right, here we go. Okay, so I just wanted to give, give everyone a quick update. On the whole rodenticide issue and particularly the effect, the effect on Bobcats. And I know we've talked about this a couple of times here, so I won't, I won't go into too much background. I think we kind of all know what the issue is. That our, you know, our Bobcat numbers are, are down significantly, our deer numbers are up significantly. You know, we're hitting more deer with cars, we're having more landscape shrubbery damage caused by deer because of the reduction in Bobcat numbers. So a lot of changes to the island because of what's going on. So just, you know, a quick update on what, what we've, what we've seen so far this year. And I won't spend too much time on this slide. I think you all understand, you know, the issue with, with these rodenticides that are second generation anticoagulants. Effectively, they're, they're quite toxic. You know, they can kill a rat in one feeding, but that rat's gonna run around for a while and potentially get eaten by a Bobcat. And then over time, it builds up in the Bobcat system and can ultimately cause them to die. So kind of to look specifically at what we're seeing with our cats. Have a few updates on this for you. So you know that last year was the first that we, you know, picked up on this problem. We, when we had an adult female, she died last August. We were able to get her tested and figure out that she died from basically eating rat poison. She had five different rat poisons in her system. At that point, we, we launched a pretty, pretty extensive public education program. Asking, you know, residents, regimes, entities, and even pest control companies to voluntarily comply. Basically to stop using these products so that we would, you know, reduce impacts to our Bobcats. And we had hoped that, that, that strategy was working. And it certainly is to some extent, but we've had two major issues already this year that I wanted to let you know about. So on May 19th, we lost one of our GPS collared adult male Bobcats. We don't know 100% for sure what killed this cat. But based on everything we saw at the scene and what the lab determined from the initial analyses. It's very likely that when we get the results back, that this will be another death from SGA's. And then probably even more tragic, you know, we all know our Bobcat numbers are declining. And, you know, the one thing that can bring the numbers back up is, is adding new Bobcats to the population. And so we had a very unfortunate incident on June 10th. Bobcat 600, one of our adult females, she died during, during labor and all four of her kittens died as well. It is almost a guarantee that this is going to be another SGA caused death. This Bobcat, and I'll talk a little bit about the blood testing we did this winter. But she was the one Bobcat that tested positive for exposure to Breta Phacum, which is an SGA in February of 2020. And again, based on what we saw at the scene and what the lab is telling us. It's almost a guarantee that this is going to be another SGA related death. So, you know, so that's six additional Bobcats that have died this year. And while we don't know, again, 100%, if it's caused by SGA's, it's very likely and we should know in the next few weeks. I think I've already updated you on the blood testing at our April meeting, but I'll just kind of run back through that again. So as I said, Bobcat 600, which is the one that died in June. She tested positive in her blood sample for exposure. And then two out of the four, not counting Bobcat 600, while they didn't have SGA's in their blood. They had unusual blood chemistry that would suggest that they had prior exposure. And because the SGA, SGA's only stay in the blood for a week or maybe two. You know, it's not a great technique to pick up on exposure levels. So, you know, we don't know for sure if, if those other cats had long-term issues. And then the last thing, and you know, I've always already said this, and we all know that our numbers are declining. In 2019, we lost four out of our six collared Bobcats, so that's a 66% mortality rate. This year, we had four Bobcats collared and two of those are dead already this year. So we're at a 50% mortality rate. And still have half, half the year to go. I can tell you that historically, our mortality rate for Bobcats, going back to our studies in 2000, 2004. Was 10% or less. This is a significant change.
Yeah. Jim, can you, can you tell me how, how long have the second generation SGA's been in effect? Is it just the last couple of years and so we're seeing this? Or have they been around longer, but we just haven't really caught up to understanding their impact until the last couple of years?
So, so they've been around quite some time. I'm sure some of the pest control guys on here could chime in, but I think it's at least 15, 20, 20 plus years that they've been around. And so that's, it's a great question, and that's a question that Aaron and I, you know, had was. Okay, these products have been around for 20 plus years. We've got, i- if we had an issue prior to about two years ago, we would know about it and we haven't had an issue. So the question of why an issue now. You know, our, our guests or our thoughts are that it's just a shift in the industry to using these products. You know, and whether that is because, you know, marketing is better or, you know, but, but it just seems to be that these are now the. The go-to product for pest control companies to put out, they're highly effective. And so my guess is that we're just seeing a lot more use of those out in the environment right now.
So Jim, sorry, you're saying that they've been around for 15 years, but you suspect they were used a lot less. And now they're kind of ubiquitous or what?
You know, I mean, that, that's my theory. I mean, you know, the other, the other possibility is, you know, that. And again, I think, you know, we've got some of the pest control reps on, on this meeting. And maybe, ma- maybe they have some information they can share, you know, after I get, get through my presentation here. But, you know, it, I mean, when you have a company, for example, you know, a large company that's servicing a thousand or more homes. Right? If they make a change to their protocol, you know, overnight to switch to a product. You know, which I don't know that they did, but I'm saying potentially, you know, just a, a business decision to move to a different product. My one or two companies could have a dramatic impact on the amount of this stuff in the environment.
But I still, you know, I'm still a little bemused. We had this on the agenda a few months ago and it had to be taken off the agenda because, you know, someone informed us it wasn't under our control. But I am bemused with all the things that we look at, that we try to regulate because they do damage to our environment, our brand, whatever it may be. This thing here seems to be something that's easy to get on top of. I mean, why can't we just stop this? Outload, no more, they're not allowed to be used on Kiowa. I mean, they're, you know, they're killing the cats and it's not, you're not making this up. I mean, this is pretty obvious that this is happening. So I just can't fathom why this is still being used and why we allow it to be used.
Yeah, you know, I think, you know, we, we had a meeting earlier today with. Some representatives from the Clemson Department of Regulation. That's, you know, the, the state agency or state group that basically regulates these products. As well as a representative or a couple of representatives from the industry itself. You know, but in terms of regulating them directly, we can't do that. It seems fairly clear in state law that we don't have the, we don't have the legal. Ability to regulate these products directly. Now, there may be another strategy to regulate these products. That doesn't regulate them directly, but rather regulates the manner in which they are applied. But I think, you know, and so, so that idea, which I don't know that, that, that we are there yet. But that idea would be to effectively ban. The feeding enticing or attracting of any wildlife species outdoors with any. Food product or other attractor. So if you did that and had exemptions for, you know, bird feeders and, and other things. That effectively you would be banning the use of these, sorry, I went all dark. Banning the use of these poisons without, you know, addressing them directly, which we can't do.
Hey, Craig, Craig, I mean, this is probably a non-starter, but every pest control company that does business on Kiowa needs a business license, right?
Yep.
Can we not make the awarding of a business license subject to them not doing certain things? Like for instance, using these products?
Well, I'm sure. Be- before I, I, I'm gonna answer that two ways. Eventually, I'm gonna say, well, on my Zoom here, sitting on your head is, is our attorney Joe. Cause he's in the little screen right above you, so I'll, I'll turn that in a second to, to him to take a shot at. But I think before that, we had a conversation, I don't know if Jim's gonna get into that or how he wants this conversation to flow. But we, we, I participated in a conversation with, with representatives from Clemson. From the pesticide industry. And also from, from a local, one of our more prominent local pesticide companies. And the theme I heard from that was setting aside legal issues of ordinance and so on. Was a, a desire, a, a recognition and understanding of the issue we were dealing with. And, and, and the importance of this to Kiowa and to its residents. And what I heard was a desire to work with the town in a variety of ways. In order to, to reduce or eliminate the use of these kinds of pesticides. So, you know, at the moment, what I, and I think Jim can get into that and some of these folks are here. Is that I think what I clearly heard was the desire to go down a path. At least if we could at first, that would get us to the end result in a, in a positive, non-litigative. Non, non-ordinance fashion. But to your specific question, do we have that ability? I'll let Joe, if he, if he wishes to opine, I'll ask Joe if he has an opinion on that.
Yep, so the state has a specific law. That we call it a field preemption law. And it's something I've become quite familiar with because it's been a, a, a point of contention with our emergency. Ordinances. But in the case of rodenticides, there is a very specific statute. That says only the state can regulate the use of rodenticides. It, it doesn't use those words exactly, but that's what it says. And so we, as a municipality. Under that statute are constrained. When we make any effort to go into that area of the law. And it, it's just such broad language. It's just something that the state, for whatever reason, has decided that only they can regulate. Now, a- and I would point out that it's, it's not an uncommon provision among states. Some of the points that Jim made with, I, I don't want to say circumventing. That restriction, but still nonetheless trying to pass laws. That are gonna limit the use of this rodenticide. I, I feel a little constrained to talk about that. I, I think it's fair to say that, that there's, there's probably gonna be some uphill battles legally. If we go into that area. And it's just solely based on a state statute.
And, and I would only add Klaus to your, to your comment that. We, we do have, and I don't want to sound like I'm trying to go towards litigation here. Cause I really would like to, to get out on the table here what we heard from, from the, the representatives that we just spoke to. But we have on this island, a lot of, of current and former ex attorneys, very capable, very thoughtful people. I've been contacted by a number of them who, you know, whose opinions I respect. And, and they're certainly, I, I've heard from a number of people who have different legal theories and are even willing to. Devote their, their time to assisting the, the town in pursuing some of those. But I think as Joe said, none of them are easy and none of them are certain. And, and, and I only have to speak here purely for myself, not for the council. To the extent that the, that A, to the extent that at the end of the day, any resident can tell their pest control company, don't use this stuff. And to the extent it seems like we have an industry who is, is at least at the moment, holding on and saying they're willing to work with us. I, I'm more inclined to wanna follow and follow that, that latter strategy. But, but Jim, I don't know how, if you want to summarize that discussion or whether some of them are on the, on the, on the call here.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just, I'll just kind of give, give a brief overview of what, what we discussed at 12:30 today. And I think we have pretty much, well, almost everybody. Yeah, who was on that call here today. So, yeah, I think this is a great opportunity, you know, if, if, if members of council want to. Speak directly with the director of the Clemson Department of Pesticide Regulation, he's here. The deputy director is here. We have a representative from a major pest control company. Who I think is still on. We may, yep.
Yeah, he's done, he's on.
Yeah, okay, so, so effectively, you know, as the mayor kind of alluded to, you know, we talked about the issue and everyone recognizes there is an issue. You know, and I think, you know, the mayor said this earlier, the devil is in the details, you know, so we know we have an issue. We want to pursue a education voluntary compliance, consumer-driven strategy. To get these products off of Kiowa. So we just gotta come up with the best strategy to do that. And so I think that, you know, the plan as it stands right now is to kind of reconvene. You know, these folks here in another week or two and try to get down to, to details. But I think the strategy again would be educate the public, educate slash potentially. Train or certify pest control providers. And basically come up with a multifaceted plan, you know, to, to ideally eliminate the use of these, of these products.
Hey, Jim, what's my, give me some talking, give us some talking points here. What, how do we explain to a owner on Kiowa who says, okay, I don't want to kill the Bobcats? What is the next most efficient, safe alternative? And, and what drawbacks does it have? What do I tell him or her?
Yeah, so, you know, it's, it's, it's not rocket science. So there are two, if not a lot more. Rodenticides with active ingredients that are not gonna hurt Bobcats. If they eat a rat that's, that's consumed these products. But they still kill rats and mice pretty much just as well as the SGA's do. So utilizing products or telling your pest control company to utilize a product containing, for example, the active ingredient. Cola calciferol. If we, if everyone on the island switched to that, then this problem would go away. You know, but it, but it, you know, it's complicated, right? If you were to go out and shop for a, for a rodenticide, I mean, each active ingredient is probably got. 20 or 30 or 40 different trade names and formulations. And, you know, you gotta look at the fine print to see the active ingredient on that.
But Jim.
Where you know what you're using.
Jim, wouldn't the professionals who are probably handling most of this stuff. Know specifically what's in each item? And therefore, if I were a homeowner and I said, I would like you to use something that doesn't include the second generation. Problem ones, they'd be happy to do it, they want to stay in business, they're, they're in favor of Bobcats too. I'd love to hear from whoever is on the line who's in this business.
Mr. Smith. Are you available?
I'm here.
Oh, there you are, he's with Exterminators.
Great.
Yeah, my name's Ken Smith, I'm vice president of operations for Palmetto Exterminators. We do have a very large footprint on Kiowa. We probably serve over a thousand customers out there. And when the town of Kia reached out to us about the Bobcat issue, we did immedi- immediately put a change in our protocols in place. We went to the standard protocol for, for baiting for, for rodents. Has pretty much been, you put a bait box down and you put the second gen product in it. Reason for that is it's there, if, if, if the rodents feed on it, it kills them and it kills them quickly. So it's efficient, it works well, it doesn't require a lot of extra monitoring. And, and what I use, what I said before in the earlier meeting is, this has been a paradigm shift with this. Of course, we, I don't think there's an exterminator out there that's gonna tell you that they don't care if we kill a Bobcat. Nobody wants to kill wildlife. You know, in our industry, we term that as a non-target, uh, non-target species. So what we did is we went to a different type of, it's really can't call it a bait. It's a monitoring block that you can put in there. So if the rodents feed on it, there's no active ingredient, it won't kill anything. But when we go back and check those bait boxes, it allows us to see that there has been feeding on that block. Now we can put in an active ingredient bait, which colicalciferol is one of the ones that, the one Jim brought up. It's only going to kill the rodent. If a Bobcat eats it, it won't, it won't do anything to the Bobcat. So we know that's a safe way going forward. And we're looking at putting that, I'm looking at putting that protocol within our company, company-wide. Because this is not just an issue of Bobcats on Kiowa. This is an issue with homeowners' pets, dogs, cats, who get into this bait, it makes them sick, it can kill them and it does kill them. So it's just, again, when, it takes something like this once in a while for us to realize, okay, we need to rethink how we're doing these things. And, and that's basically what's happened.
Great, well, that's very helpful, Ken, because if you do it, I, I can't imagine that most people who you compete with. Wouldn't want to do the same thing, especially if the homeowner begins to say, I need you to do this, right? I mean, why wouldn't you, you want to stay in business, you want to grow your business?
Well, and, and I'm not, I can't speak for every exterminator out there. You know, the one thing that I do know is that, you know, doing them anytime, we, we call it IPM, integrated pest management. That's usually a less active ingredient product approach. You do more monitoring, you do more inspecting, and then you target treatment. It's, it's, it's a greener approach and, and it's certainly, you know, more sensitive. So. Trying to think the right way to phrase this. Not everybody is worried about doing that, not everybody wants to do that because it, it does and it will take more time. So their answer is, I don't want to change anything, what I do is fine, it, it's not gonna bother that. Yes, you are correct, if you get the homeowners involved saying, I don't want you using these products on my house. They're not gonna have any option but to change the way they do business. And, and I know Jim spoke earlier about, I don't know Jim, if it was a letter you sent out, but you only got. Responses from two, two companies and I don't know how many are on that island, but there's a lot more than two exterminating companies doing business on that island.
Yeah, I mean, I think we, we sent out 25 notification, I think we had 25 maybe companies listed that had business licenses. And the two responses were, were companies that responded and said, we will voluntarily stop using it.
Please tell me one of them.
Yeah, yeah. I had, I had some responses that were, no, we're not gonna stop using this.
Exactly.
That were, well, you gotta choose, do you want Bobcats or do you want rats?
Yeah.
And so, yeah.
So that's kind of what I was trying to say in a nice way, that not everybody's gonna have that outlook, Dan.
Okay, but, but wait, wait, let me just go back to that and I, I guess I'm just lacking the understanding of it. Someone responded, well, you gotta choose, do you want Bobcats or do you want rats? Is that a choice? I don't understand why, what advantage does this new, this newer second generation product that also kills our Bobcats? What, what, what does that do? Does it kill the rats faster, more efficiently, kill more of them? Or how is it an advantage? Cause you just said, the older products or different products, they'll also kill, they just won't kill the Bobcats.
Yes, and the second gen, they, they are an older product, they've been around for, as long as I've, I've been in this industry, industry almost 30 years. And they've been around since I've been in this industry. So, but the answer is to everything you said is yes, they, they work faster, they're more, they're more efficient. There is a place for them, okay? What, I guess what, what we're saying is, the place is not around someone's house who you don't, who you not sure if they have a rodentous issue or, or they don't have one. So we don't go in there with the, in other words, you don't go in there with the biggest cannon you have right up front. You can go in there with a pellet gun first and see how that works. And if it doesn't, you can graduate. So I, I think it would be a mistake to say we need to eliminate them completely because there are applications that you need to use them in. But to say we just, you use them everywhere, that's the wrong approach also. Does, does that answer your question?
It does, I think, yes, thank you.
So I might ask, and, and then I think we can, unless there's any other questions, we move on. Steve Cole with Clemson talked in our meeting about, you know, his view of, of the direction that we need to move. Or a direction which is really more focused on education, better understanding. Who the decision makers are in determining what products are used and, and, and how to, how to focus on that. Steve, are you on the call and I wonder if you have anything to add here?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'll, I'll just add to, to what Ken has said, and I think Dan alluded to it just a minute ago. The ultimate decision maker on who uses these products is the homeowner and, and the, the residents. If they have the information they need to make an informed decision and advise their pest control operators on what they would prefer to be used. I think that there's no choice, but the, the pest control companies are going to have to, you know, if they want to keep those customers. You're gonna have to make some adjustments to how they do these things. So the big push I think that, that Clemson can help make is twofold at least, and perhaps more. Certainly, we can provide more information to share with homeowners on, on what to ask for, what to look for. What they should avoid with the, you know, questions that they have and, and products to use. How to guide their pest control operator in the direction that, that you want them to go in. But also working with the pest control industry, which I think will be a very easy thing to do. We have numerous meetings with the association and membership. And we'll have opportunities to, to share the information, the concerns that the island has. And, and let them know that the homeowners are gonna start making requests for other products to be utilized on the island. To help protect the Bobcat population and minimize some of the risk. And that's the goal with, with any pesticide product that we have across the state, even, even the, the products that are used in agricultural settings. If we find that there's a, a, a risk that's there, the best way to mitigate that risk is to find alternatives through IPM practices. That, that Ken touched on. We can reduce risk voluntarily just by making a few changes in, in cultural control methods, which would be. Certain practices outside in the landscape, helping educate the homeowners as to what is really a pest issue and what's not a pest issue. Jim Jordan and I talked about that a little bit a couple of weeks ago as well. And then helping homeowners understand that we have a lot of tools in the toolbox that we can utilize when we have to go to a pest control option. That can control these, these rodents in a proper way, that's, that's just as effective. It may take a little more effort on the, the front end, but a lot more dividends on the back end with, with regard to environmental risks. So I think there's a lot of things that we can facilitate on our end as far as helping get the homeowners educated. And understand what kinds of questions to ask, to be more informed. And then also facilitating discussions with the pest control industry, making sure they understand. Companies like Ken's are already making changes. And if you want to remain a viable contractor on this island, you're gonna have to make some of those changes as well. Because the, the homeowners are going to start demanding different products be utilized. the homeowners are going to start demanding different products be utilized. And I think the, the industry folks will be supportive of that for the most part, and the ones that aren't, they're gonna have to figure out different ways to, uh, to have customers because uh the, the island's going to demand it. So, uh, I appreciate the opportunity for us to come together and I appreciate uh the, the discussions and the information Jim has given us for sure and look forward to trying to facilitate uh programs and, and exchanging of information and education. And uh if you've been in the education business, you know, the goal is uh behavior change. And uh, I think if we can get the right information out there, we'll see behavior changes with the, uh, the more informed population that's on the island as far as the residents. And then also the industry will be much more aware of the concerns and, and the, the change there will come as well.
Chris and Stephanie, you both sat in the meeting that Jim hosted earlier. Any, anything to add? Any other observations or views to add?
Well, we, yeah, we, we had a good hour, hour and ten-minute discussion. And walking into it, I wasn't quite sure what to expect, but it really does get down to the homeowner demanding what they want and won't accept. So, you know, we're gonna have to start a save the bobcat campaign. And with Clemson's help and, and Ken's help, start educating people, but that's the only solution to this thing, given we're blocked on the legislative side of the world.
Yeah, and, and in fact, I could add one thing also, uh, you know, it, it could be something as simple as preferred vendor. In other words, if you've got companies that are not going to do what you asked them to do, you just, you know, you publish it. I'm sure Kiowa has some kind of a publication they send out to the homeowners. You just let them know who the companies are that are willing to work with them to try to take care of this problem.
Yeah.
Just an idea.
That's a great idea. And Jim, I think, I mean, you know better than I. I think this is urgent. We're losing bobcats at a rate that we can't afford to lose anymore. This is nuts. I remember even two years ago, I would regularly see bobcats. I haven't seen any in the last twelve months. Zero, none. That tells me the problem is serious, and I think homeowners will be on this like a blanket. And I, I do like Ken's idea. Here are the people who are willing to cooperate and, and if they're, if your vendor isn't on this list, you ought to think about a different vendor or a way to present it so that we don't appear to be discriminating, but let's face it, that's what we wanna do.
Hey Craig, I, I love that idea also, but I think we've raised an idea like that in different contexts um over the months. Certainly I have, and I think you have always pushed back that that was legally questionable. Is that correct?
That, who pushed back?
You, uh, saying that that was risky and legally questionable if the town came out and effectively said, um, we like these six vendors because, or you should consider these six vendors because they do A, B, and C, and you should consider not using these three vendors because they do not do A, B, and C.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll defer to, to Joe, but I think the way I've described it in the past is that I think it's okay for us to say, for example, this is, this is the service of the behavior, or you know, I'll, I'll use the example of COVID. Right now, you know, we have for restaurants between the state and the county, we've come up with all of these uh, like the Palmetto pledge where if you're following certain guidelines, you can put a sticker on your window um, that says you're following that. And we can go out and say, boy, we think you ought to be going to restaurants that have that sticker. But I don't necessarily publish, oh, by the way, here's the seven that don't go to them. And I think the sense has been that it's okay for us to say, here's a protocol that we think is the preferred or is endorsed, um, the use of, and, and then, but, but in, in if then a vendor can show, yeah, we, you know, we have that, that Kiowa seal of good housekeeping or whatever, where I have, I, it has always been explained to me, the danger is by name, start picking out individual players and, and naming winners and losers, but um, I, I mean, I would quickly toss that question to Joe, but, but more likely if the, if this group moves forward to create a specific recommendation, I think that's one of the things they can look at and where we would need to get a legal opinion.
And one more thing, and I won't say anything else. I say that in the spirit of that should help change other pest control companies' minds and how much they wanna cooperate. Because if, if that happens, they're gonna wanna be on that list.
You're gonna wanna be on the list, right?
For that, just to add, I, I, I certainly think that's a lot more legally feasible than trying to attack the state law. Like that.
Which would just be a lot of legal fees, right?
Yeah. Well, I'm afraid it'd be legal fees that uh were what Bill spent.
Well, let me characterize so we can move forward. Um, I think what Jim needs to, I think his goal for this and in, and what he needs to understand is um, is whether in the eyes of the town council, um, we see this both as a priority, cause we have limited staff and limited resources, a priority that you would want to see him and, and Aaron and the town focus in working with, with these other individuals to, to try to pursue this direction. Um, and are you comfortable at the moment as opposed to pursuing a legal angle? Um, giving this a shot and working with, with uh, with, again, with Clemson, with our providers, with the industry um, to see if we can a- arrive at a, an effective approach that can get us to the same point of not having these um, these products used on the island. Are they, Jim, Jim needs to hear some direction and some marching orders.
Well, I'll, I'll speak up. I think it's urgent and I think it ought to be a very high priority because we don't really have, you know, a window here that we can let this continue or there won't be any bobcats to talk about. So I would consider it urgent, Mayor.
Agreed. Agreed.
Okay. Jim, anything else you wanna add?
No, I don't think so. Um, we'll, we'll start working on a plan and um, keep everyone posted.
If I can just thank Mr. Wright, Ryan, and Mike as well for uh being on the call.
Yeah, there, there are three or four people that, that didn't, that are out there. They didn't uh, that speak on this part of the call, but were really, really helpful on our earlier conversation and, and I uh, I really appreciate their, their involvement.
Yeah, they, they've given us their entire afternoon, so thank you.
Yeah.
Jim, it sounds like you are gonna be good friends here soon.